Is able to drive herself now, so the whole reason why I did it was to drive her glasses and park and stuff. Now we all have a little self-driving now next weekend.
Hey Diane, can you just give me a mic check real quick?
So that I can bring some of the.
Hi. Perfect. Thanks.
When is your lease up there?
End of December.
Hey Zo, I'm just checking to see if you can hear me because I switched to my AirPods. Hey Zo, can you hear me?
It's on the twenty first.
Yeah Diane, I can hear you, don't worry.
I can't hear you.
Can you now? Yeah Diane, I can hear you, can you hear me?
I got you now.
I wear an archer day, initially wearing an archer day. So that's weird. He went, he played football for Madison.
Everybody ready? I'd like to call this meeting of the Madison Public Schools Board of Education to an open and let's stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Right, so first off, we have our school slash community session, which includes public participation. Is there anybody in the audience or online? No? Okay. Uh, the Board of Student Representatives report. Hi guys.
So last week and the week before, there's been a lot of talk in our school about phones and phone usages. This has started in a leadership conference that we had, student leadership conference in November. And the Madison Youth Unplugged group, there's three parents who came to talk with us. They just had an open conversation to really get what our opinions are on the matter. And it was a really respectful conversation. The students had a lot of varying inputs from like the freshmen to the seniors. And basically they came down to the conclusion that, you know, they think that in middle schools and elementary schools, there should be a ban on the cellphones. But the high schoolers are kind of saying how, and also might be more stressful to not have their phones during class. Because to check your, like an email super quickly, to see if you submitted something that's like, you weren't sure like last night you submitted it or not. But because a lot of people in our school are so academically rigorous, there's really no time in the day to just be scrolling. Or just have a ton of time on your phone and anything, you want to be doing your homework during that time. But anyway, that's a great conversation. Everyone was super respectful for whatever opinions that they had. So then they brought this idea to the advisory curriculum and they talked about the anxious generation, the book that I'm probably sure you all heard of it. Mrs. Saliter, he loves it and loves promoting it. But this was more of a way to step back outside of the classroom and at your house and on your own time. Are you going to be spending all your time on your phone or are you going to be going out, trying new things? And it's kind of, even though a lot of people know the mental health aspect of it, it's kind of reminding you of just restating the facts, it feels good to do. And.
Sorry, on that issue, either Brooke or Grace, were you involved in the discussion with Madison Youth Unplugged?
I wasn't, I don't.
Yeah, I wasn't able to attend the leadership conference, but with the Madison Youth Family Services, they presented to that board. So I, I'm very familiar with that.
Can I ask either one of you then, if you would, whichever you were involved in? When they got student input, what was their reaction to that? Was it an open two-way discussion?
I think they were kind of, they were kind of saying that we are the, not the exceptions, but since a lot of people in the student leadership group are kind of qualified students. And have that kind of initiative and innovative mindset. They were, obviously they were really impressed with what we had to say, but they were kind of looking at it in a more of a broad aspect. And they're like, well, yes, I'm glad that everyone in this group has this outlook on it. But there's a lot of people who aren't as motivated in school to be doing their homework during their extra time. So they're, they're happy with what we had to say, but also we're looking at the kids who might not have been represented in that group of students.
Yeah, and I also think it's important to add that all these parents are children, or are parents of youth in the community. So they're experiencing this at the elementary and middle school levels. They don't yet have any high schoolers. So I think they were really curious to see like what that looks like in the lives of high school students or kind of what to expect for their children or how to be prepared. So that they can better teach their children like safe phone usage. So I thought they were really open. I think initially I was a little like standoffish if they're really condemning any usage of phones. But they seemed really reasonable and they really appreciated our feedback, it seems.
So what was the final thought of you guys?
Um, kind of like what I was saying before about the swing up into different grade levels. They believed that like, and also what we were talking about, a lot of people now like in our grade did get their phones until we were thirteen, fourteen. So we didn't get them until the end of middle school and we thought that was really great. So we agreed that in, in the middle schools, elementary schools, we shouldn't have phones. But once it comes up to the high school level, it's kind of a part of your everyday life now. Without having it, you're missing the useful tools, the tools that actually help you in your everyday life, not just.
So you think that you should keep them with you during the day?
Yeah, I think that the system that hand has in place is really reasonable. And I think a lot of students appreciate the fact that your phone should be in your bag during class periods, in the halls, during lunch. You can have access to it and it's a really good balance. And also we were talking about how phones are so present in today's society. It's not really realistic to just completely ban them. We should be learning how to use them within reason because in the workday, you can have, sorry, you can have access to your phones. And you, you need to learn how to be responsible with it. So I think that they understood that and we did agree that at the elementary and middle school level, that kind of seems inappropriate to have them being used in class. But when you're high schoolers, you should be able to have them on you, but not in your hands during.
Should be up to the teacher, you feel, to who will be the monitor?
Yeah, I like, I feel like it kind of has to go down to the teacher because there can't be someone like Mrs. Saliter or someone with some more authority in every classroom. But I think, so it has to kind of be up to the teacher because there's so many classes going on. I think just having the expectations be set and minded throughout the year of what the teacher should be doing. Maybe like a, someone with more authority walking in every so often, like once a month or something, just to make sure that everything is going as they are supposed to be doing.
So is it your impression, not only among the student leadership council students, but the broader student population? That students are using their phones responsibly according to the current policy or regulations? Or do you think that there's a lot of abuse?
Well, from my perspective, I feel like the students in my classes have been extremely responsible and like respectful with their phone usage. In the classes that I'm in, you can't really afford to be on your phone. It would just kind of harm your learning. So I think that the students kind of understand that. And we, in some classes, we have like a calendar and you have to put your phone in when you walk into others. You can have it in your backpack as long as it's not being used. But I think students have done a really good job in it. And definitely my freshman year and part of my sophomore year, the rules were kind of broken and not as put in place. But this year, teachers have been really on it and I've definitely noticed the difference.
Oh, there is.
Yeah, definitely.
Part of the presentation that was made to the board a couple of weeks ago. Suggested the phone's impact on socializing, particularly during the lunchroom. So they presented a picture of, you know, some schools where, you know, they could hardly find any students talking to each other. All they saw were, you know, kids looking at their phones. Which then maybe wonder, gee, you know, I'd like to see what the lunchroom looks like at hand. What, what, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think, um, if you don't have, if you are socializing, I see a lot of people socializing each other because a lot of people can't during the classrooms. Because you just have to listen to the notes and everything. But if they aren't socializing, most people are not just scrolling on their phone. Most people are doing homework and then asking their friends questions about the homework. And obviously there's exceptions, obviously there's some people who sit on their phones. But for the most part, at least when I, in my lunchway, I see most people either talking with each other or with a notebook or a computer doing work for another class.
And, but, and. Part of the hypothesis that's presented in the anxious generation. Is aimed more at social media than it is at the actual tool of the mobile phone or the smartphone. Do you feel that the current policy, the way it's in practice this year, that, you know, you feel like it's working well? Do you think that helps to diminish pressures from social media? Or do you think that it's just like pounding in on every student all day long when they have their phones?
Well, I think that social media is definitely harmful. I mean, the studies in the book show that. And just from my experience, I've had encounters where I'm like, wow, this is a really negative result from the usage of social media. But I feel like that shouldn't be the school's responsibility. I think that by saying no phones during class periods, that's their attempt to limit the usage of phones. And you make a good point, people aren't on their phones doing whatever. They're usually on their phones accessing social media. But I feel like that should be in the home or like your parents or your guardians should be the ones enforcing rules on social media. It's not really the school's responsibility. They should limit access to the phones, but they should be controlling like, oh, you should post this online or you shouldn't follow this person. Because that seems very personal.
I also feel like if we completely ban them or take them out of schools, a lot of people are going to be incentivized to find loopholes. And get other ways to get their social media use out of it. If you completely ban it because they're like, well, you're taking it all away from me, like I need it somehow. Because it is addicting and you want, you have that feeling to like want to go on it. And also in the student leadership conversation, we were talking more about how, at least now, outside of, like in middle school, a lot of people were kind of comparing themselves to other, others on like Instagram and stuff. But once you go into the high school level, at least this is what was talked about, you kind of feel like it's shifted from looking compared to other people. To the worst part of social media being just like you scrolling and you constantly scrolling and you get into this time sucking zone. But in school, if you only have it for two minutes in the hallway, you can't really get trapped in that zone. Which is what, at least in the high school level, we seem to be the biggest issue with like social media in our everyday lives.
So Grace, just to follow up on your question, thank you both, this is all great stuff. So thank you. Grace, to follow up on what you just said. You feel like it's the responsibility of the parents and not the school to kind of set boundaries for social media use, for example. But do you think there's a place in education for the school to model and to teach basic concepts of digital citizenship, for example?
Yeah, I definitely think that could be really beneficial for students. And I totally understand when schools get involved with inappropriate social media usage within school boundaries, with school related subjects. That makes sense. But I just feel, and I do think that schools, schools are a place of education. So it makes sense that you're educating your students on proper technology usage and what's appropriate and what's not. But I think regarding like personal, like how much time you're spending on social media or what social media you're allowed to use. Should be a parental decision because it's different for each kid. I, I'm one of four and one of my brothers doesn't have social media by choice. One is barely on it, I'm on it and my younger brother doesn't, isn't allowed to get it yet. So I think that that just shows how everybody has different purposes with it. Everybody's going to use it differently. So it's not fair to have one like guideline. Because everybody's different with their usage.
Thank you so much for this input. It's very valuable to us because, you know, as you know, we're confronted with the issue and we're just, you know, as a board, be trying to do the right thing. So it's good to have input, not only from certain parent groups on either side, but also from the students. We greatly appreciate it. Anyone else have any other questions?
Thank you.
And I cut you off in the middle of your reports of these.
So, so other stuff that's happening in the school is that Mrs. Saliter and there's two other, I think Mrs. Witcher and Mrs. De Silva, I'm completely sure. They went to DC to get their blue ribbon plaque and flag and all this cool stuff. And they're recognized in front of a ton of people, like thousand people. And they are super happy, Mrs. Saliter was showing off all this stuff, he's so excited. And kind of to bring us to the students, we're going to have a winter pep rally this year. I think this is the first time at least that I've had a winter pep rally. It's always gotten canceled or something for some reason. But we're going to dedicate like some of the time to talking about the blue ribbon status and how great that is and just kind of celebrating the students. And then we're also going to do the typical sports and captain fun stuff.
Um, so last Friday, we had the Veterans Day assembly, which I always really appreciate. And it, the students were really respectful. I thought they were a really good audience and we had some student performers singing like the national anthem and different songs. And they were incredible. I was, my jaw was dropped. I, they're such talented like performers at hand. So that was really positive. And then we have exams coming up. We're starting our exam prep next week, which I can't believe the first trimester is coming to an end. Everyone always says that, but like, I feel like that's really relevant because I cannot believe it went by so quickly. And then I mentioned this partially, but the sport seasons are wrapping up for the fall. I'm on the girls soccer team. We got out our first round, so that was unfortunate. And then the boys soccer team was doing really well, but they got out their third round. And then field hockey was our last hope, but they got out tonight, which was really disappointing. And then the last sport, still playing is football. And we have our last home game on Friday. And then the Guilford Thanksgiving game, which is always a huge event, but that will be at Guilford. And then they start off playoffs and they're still undefeated. So I'm, I'm hopeful in them too, but that's what we have to look forward to.
Thank you both. Any other questions?
Brooke, Mr. Saliter didn't talk about the great time you had with the third person who went out.
That was the highlight.
It was, it was a great time. Yeah, thank you. Him have all of, all of that. There was some great stuff and it was, it was part of, it was going to be part of my report. It was a great time, very eventful and good breakout sessions and professional development for us.
Thank you both very much. And if you need to skedaddle so you can, I'm showing my. So you can prepare for your finals, your exams, basically, for you, but thank you. That was the part of the agenda where we turn to Dr. Cook for the superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Clapton. Very excited tonight to have Adam Lovitas with us again. I know he doesn't need much intro from the, for the work, but Adam's from Colliers and has been working with the district for several years. On new building project, he has an update for us tonight.
It's good, Mary Laura, glad to be back. It's been a moment since kind of given a sort of a preamble meeting, which is what this is tonight. Before forthcoming votes targeted for next month or so, but I'll, we'll get to all that very shortly. So this slide deck, my understanding is that's been shared with you. Not going to run through all the slides because many of them get into each individual room. And that's not the point of tonight. The point of tonight is just to give a short update on sort of the process that the town and district have been going to develop some of these upcoming packages for furniture. ADIT and playgrounds. So just going to quickly walk through these and then again, no road journey for tonight, but want to set it up for the next month. So just to kind of highlight, this is where we're at in the schedule. Obviously it's a big long schedule and it's hard to see some of the smaller components. But this, this red line here in the middle is right about where we're at in construction, a little bit more than halfway through. For those that have been at the site recently, you see we've got walls going up, bricks, interior build out. It's really starting to flesh out the bones of the building. What the focus for this evening is, is this little lavender area down here for furniture and those other packages for ADIT and playground. So while Gilbane is building the actual building, obviously we went through all the approvals for that before. There are separate packages that we developed and procure outside of Gilbane. Because frankly, it's not necessarily in their scope of expertise. You know, buildings, they don't pick out chairs, procure individual TVs, things of that nature. So like I said, those three packages, furniture, ADIT and playgrounds are being finalized now with various user stakeholders from the district. By and large, Dr. Cook and Principal Peggy Frost, so Assistant Superintendent Gale. But as appropriate additional stakeholders, which I'll kind of highlight as we go through some of the slides on what we're, what we're developing now. But the key point here is that it's been a lot of preamble work to develop the packages. But we're about to get into the season of approvals, school building committee, Department of Education, the state, and then contracting. The end deliverables for these packages are an early ITF. Uh the end deliverables for these packages are uh an early IT effort. That's mainly to get the internet and the network up in the building before it's done being built, so that way the contractors can tie into it with mechanical systems through the actual. Network to tie into the um the district and the internet and all the good stuff. But also uh over the summer, when there's installation of um the actual playgrounds, bringing in all the furniture. We want that to happen after construction's done, so that way you don't have nothing that they work happening while you're taking plastic off of a nice brand new chair. And that also uh separately in the move, but that's, that's not really a package, it's more a. Retain mover and that coordinate, so that's an item that we have coming, but it's not an approval necessarily like we would have for this board. So highlight uh some of the actual bits and pieces of these packages, uh just to kind of graphically show the group. Uh we have the the two or the three areas within the new elementary school, um the um. West half, uh east half of the main or upper level, if you will, and then the uh east half of the lower level. Um with the various different components and so it ties into their sort of thematic um uh. Structure, um they have other schemes and palettes and um you know, we're gonna graphics right now, they're gonna tie into these as well. But with this in mind is uh how we zoom out from something like a overall rendering down to individual floor plans, so. Just saw the west half of the building, we're going through each and every room, it's every single one of these chairs and tables and rugs and all that good stuff. That's being reviewed, specified, confirmed as far as what the town will be purchasing to flesh out the new school. Um so it's just the east half, similar situation, and at the lower level on the west half. These plans will ultimately be formalized into formal drawing packages that'll be part of the approval package, uh it'll just be a, you know, a slideshow. But more instructive than um probably the drawings are the actual sort of breakdowns of what's going in the room. So I've highlighted a few examples here to kind of show um the differences of what's going in different types of rooms, but also. Kind of be able to speak to some of the process baked into these selections. So as you can see, it's a 3K room and it has things that you might expect in a 3K room. And the way that this scope evolved was that the architect Tekton, they have a interior design and furniture team that specializes in these components. They're familiar with what pieces are currently being specified in similar schools, what's available on state contract. Uh different pricing levels as you go through and and they understand particularly because they uh work with the district on. The Brown Elementary School as well, have a, have a good sense of what's going into the buildings and so they would propose some scope. Propose some options and then work in real time, multiple multi-hour meetings with school administration, staff, teachers. To to flesh out what, what they want in each one of these, does it have a table with casters or no casters? Is it casters in some rooms, but not other rooms? So you can kind of compare this to uh a fifth grade room. It's got components that you expect more for fifth grade than you would for 3K, which would make sense, but again, you have to go through it. Sometimes it's a question of our demarcation, you know, this kindergarten and 3K and and first grade gets something and then we transition to second grade. Or does that transition happen in third grade, those are all discussions that get baked into um what's being uh specified for each of these rooms and spaces. And here, this is just a sample slide from one of the later meetings, kind of identifying again that that thought process going in. You know, we don't want this type of chair, we want this chair with the cantilevers, how do they stack, how does that work with maintenance, where do they go with? Uh where are all the various heights that are being selected, is it a brand we're familiar with, or are we going out in the later, we wanna get a sample of. This chair to make sure it doesn't feel terrible uh when you sit in it, so. That's the the back and forth that's going ahead, and then with just the architect specifying something and then the town is just living with whatever architect has specified. He, so that's, that's again, the high level overview, there are more slides again in the packets, it's shown, I'm not gonna go through them all today, but. As you're, if if you decide to dig into it, that's the uh methodology that was, went into the furniture package. ADIT is a little less exciting in terms of the actual uh components. Uh largely, it's a specifications uh type exercise to ensure that. All the various components for network systems are provided, the quantities are are understood. And the actual specifications are are aligned with district standards and can work with the broader map at large. Uh as you might tell from, you know, the the. Way that this is shaping up, there's a lot of need for ensuring that the, and you're not just going out and getting some wireless access points, for example. You're getting the ones that work with the town's systems, so. There's a, there's always a focus on procurement as you're going through building these types of packages, but with ADIT, it kind of shines through. Uh particularly well because you might have one chair or another chair, but if you have the wrong network switch, you're just not gonna work. So there's a heavier emphasis on uh that level compatibility uh when we're building out the ADIT package. And then the third leg of the idea, the stools, is the playground package. Uh just to kind of refresh uh the collective memory, there are three playground areas that are within the scope of the project. And Gilbane basically owns the the earthwork up until you get to the the actual surfacing of the playground equipment. So we have the Blue KK Playground here on the west side and then the two areas for the upper gates uh on the east side of the building. So over the furniture package, there'll be a series of plants that go along with them where uh I included a slide just to kind of. Show how the 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 equipment gets specified, not only, you know, what type of equipment do we wanna swing, do we wanna merry-go-round, what have you, but. You have to get into fall height zones and ensuring that when someone jumps off the swing, there's enough for upper ice surface within this area to to meet standards. More instructively, there's also uh rendering. So uh what was particularly um, I don't wanna say interesting, but uh refreshing. For this package was the emphasis on inclusivity and not just, now we always hear the students want zip lines, so there's. There is more decent equipment than this is. But also, you know, are we meeting the needs of the students was the thing that was constantly brought up. Within uh the development of these packages, so you'll see typical type of slides and finding things of that view, but also. Imaginative play, is it just imaginative players, it's imaginative play that can suit to a wide uh breadth, uh breadth of students. Uh that have different physical limitations, um there's just the inverse uh component to that. Uh a good example, I think, of that type of thinking was with this piece here at the forefront. Where the initial suggestion from the designer was, it's a silver component, but it was higher above the ground. So this one brought it back down closer to ground level to be more accessible. Uh another element that was added in the next rendering, you can see there's a shade here added, which doesn't necessarily sound like the most. Releasing playground component, but if you're thinking about students that don't wanna go on the swings, they wanna see their friends, they wanna play games, they wanna what have you. And then there are, you know, components here, I think there's uh some musical instrument type pieces if memory serves. But it's, it's not just thinking about how many swings or how many slides or how many that, it's really kind of incorporate something so that. It covers many um bases as you can with what you're purchasing.
So zip lines are not.
This, this component here, it's not a, you know, a string tied to a tree and another tree, but there is, there is a zip lining component to it, so.
But not a true like.
Uh I've, I've actually seen this component installed at a recent uh school and it's, it's pretty cool.
It has support in place underneath.
I know, I've, I just.
I know, I'm just.
There weren't worse zip lines, but yeah.
I just wanted to.
Uh but thank you for bringing up the water place, uh there is a hundred percent water place specified for all the playgrounds, so. There's not, you know, well, wood chips you have to maintain or worse yet, have to, you know, maybe get.
But what's on, what's on the ground part?
That's, that's the.
That's what that is.
Water place rubberized surface, so it's.
I mean, it's like doing old school nurse, so.
Those splinters, yeah.
Those splinter, oh my god, no.
Those splinters. Uh so again, maximizing uh inclusivity and uh just kind of a nice feel of playground, so. So speaking to the timeline, um this uh again, this is just pretty precursor meeting, the meeting before the meeting, so to speak. Uh we'll be looking to come back to this board, uh at this point, it's probably not the end of November, it's more likely to be a December meeting. To do um similar votes as we did with construction, so um three packages, we'll have three votes to them. Before we go to the state, and so it's not a, it's not a vote to award, it's a word saying that yes, we agree that this scope of work is in alignment with the need for the board. In alignment with the education specifications, please go get permission from the state to go and uh put this up to bid or contract as a permit. Um then we went to do our state meetings in December, January, and then going back to the school building committee and the boards like January, February to. We have to go to bid, go to bid, we have to just sign purchase orders, contracts, that's what we'll be doing. That's uh we have the growing piece for this evening, um any questions, I have to answer them, but like I said, that's. Uh now I've turned out the material for vote, one vote.
Any questions for that?
I was the fastest applying, that's.
There you go. And just while we're here, I I will share that um some of us were able to go on the tour today. It is amazing how that school is coming together, it's exciting, it's, you know, it's on time. And it's really coming together nicely and you can, you know, you see all the interns right now, they can imagine. How cool it's gonna be when it's done and, you know, Colliers and Gilbane and Tekton. Um and all the subs have been doing tremendous work, so, and I know it hasn't been easy because um of the supply. Chain issues that we've had, the longer delays on procurement of certain items. But that's all been managed um and beautifully, so um thank you very much and. Thanks to all of our uh vendors.
Damn, great work. It's a great team. I have your work with Gilbane and Tekton there.
Thanks.
Also wanted to take this opportunity to thank Adam, you know, the uh amount of calls and uh time that he's with us on these uh items and his patience and guidance. It's just been phenomenal, you know, uh also wanna thank my whole team, as you can imagine, like I, A D uh conversations, Art is on those calls. Gail is on most of the calls, uh most of the calls, but Becky Frost is on all the calls, and so I thank Becky for. For that, I, you know, I I don't know that I would be able to do what she's been doing with this project in terms of. Picking out colors for the different classrooms and getting teacher input for the different, you know, rugs and what. What rug and size rug, it's just, it's amazing, the details, as you can see from some of Adam's uh PowerPoint slides, so. It's a, it's a lot of work, so thank you to everybody.
I know that, Adam, your team is doing great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another item uh that we had pretty tight was the non-laps in educational fund update, as the board notes, this is a new state law and we uh. Wanna take full advantage of this, um we have the final number that has been audited um and. Shared with us from Stacy Nobit, so it's a hundred and forty one thousand dollars, a hundred and eighty nine dollars, um and so. Um we hope to next time bring with you forward the list of what we would spend this funding on. I um have shared before, we're looking at a, a new scoreboard for uh the high school, it's uh. Uh we had at least one board member share that the um they've been at um games where the scoreboard's been out, it is relatively old and the remaining funds we want this. Put towards Brown School specifically to classrooms that are going to be preschool for um next year and that would uh help. Put money towards that with, along with other uh funds that uh facilities already has allotted for that and get that accomplished, but. That would be a a separate vote and we know the process then is to um inform the board and selectmen and board of finance of that. So we, we just had that update for you tonight as we um will most likely at this time of the year, every, every year, so it's a really a great opportunity for us to. You know, have those funds available, be able to do projects each, each year, smaller projects, um you know, kind of one-time items. And then just as a uh update, as our student shared, very busy month, uh specifically for the high school uh in particular, on Sunday of this week. NEAS starts their visit, so um the board has a role in that, as you know from your, your calendar update and a email I sent you today. Uh but it's just a um, you know, really at the once in every ten years that we get to this point with our accreditation process, very um. Important and uh we appreciate NEAS um in the way they approach it now and that they had a, a team come two years ago and so we are in a. Really good position, we feel, the high school is is very well prepared for this and they um. Use distributed leadership for this, so our, our coordinators or teachers have been very involved in the process, so. We think they'll, they'll be ready, they intend to visit every um classroom at least uh once, so all of our teachers will. Will be visited by the uh the visiting team and um you know, are seem genuinely excited about it and. You know, couldn't come at a better time because we've accomplished a lot, those uh brighter area goals, um. And then also related to the NEAS, um Gail, TJ and Michelle Horn will be presenting at NEAS Annual Conference coming up and so they have a um. Just a really wonderful presentation, I've had a sneak peek of it, it's really looking at the profile of graduate work and how that's embedded in curriculum and we know we do a. Really good job with that and have been leading that um charge, you know, we had, the district had done that work, um. Prior to that being a really a NEAS requirement, so um they saw us as a head of the curve and um. Have asked our, our small team to uh to present, so I'm looking forward to uh Gail doing that and sharing how that, how that goes, I'm sure that's gonna be well attended at a. Conference that's pretty competitive with the breakout sessions, um and then um for the board, I know. Many of the board members are attending the cave caps, I'm sure Seth will speak to this under the uh um. Board comments on uh on Friday this week for the, the conference, so um it's exciting, I'll be excited to. Join you for that and take our picture with the commissioner, um I think it's about ten thirty or eleven o'clock, um. When uh we do that for uh the board's award for a board extension, so um we're just seeing you all on Friday for that.
Quick question, so we're meeting Sunday night, is that just an introduction to?
So um I have, the last time I I um did that and um so it was prior to Zoom being or, you know, uh Google meets being so. Prevalent, they used to come in and meet in person, um it's really the start of their visit, so they are uh going to be in town, but they're going to be at their hotel, so they're doing a. Uh a Google meet with us, um I have heard from staff members who've gone on visits that the last some general questions. But then really focus on how the board has supported the high school and those areas of priority growth being. Um really what they, what they wanna hear about, so you know, for instance, the one about um HVAC, you know, so when they came. Two years ago, we had just had uh a you, a unit ventilator at the, on the roof. Release and at areas of the school that weren't usable because it had just flooded, um and they heard from staff that it is uh. Um you know, eighty degrees on the third floor and then in the same, you know, classrooms down on the first floor, you know, in the same area. It's um sixty five degrees and cold, so they, you know, that was something that our staff shared with, and they kind of get in the way of uh instruction. And student learning and so the board has supported that work and we'll have that fixed this summer, so they're gonna be pleased to, to hear about that.
So who will be our sponsor?
Um Seth will, he'll be on the call, I know, and and I'll be there as, as well, but I think they're gonna wanna hear from, from all board members, that's nothing to be. Scripted, I just wanted to give you some talking points, but they'll, they'll wanna hear, I think, you know, your opinion.
If I can just um, I, what I'd like to see um is. Like just so we show some level of organization and some level of expertise in, in response. Um like the questions that do with facilities, maybe Emily could, could take the lead on the answer. Ones that are finance related, Galen can take the lead and ones that are curriculum related. Yeah.
That would make sense.
And then, but you know, other people can feel free to, to chime in, I think we probably will do what best if we keep our responses crisp. Um and you know, we don't just make it a huge round robin on every question, um but I think if those folks take the lead. On those issues, um then that'll serve us well. All right, thank you, uh board member comments? Anyone? Diane, do you have anything to share? Uh okay, then I will, um I. Uh okay, then I will um, I will uh take Craig up on his uh offer to discuss. The upcoming uh cave apps conference, uh which is um this Friday and Saturday. Um generally, I I know that several of us are signed up, um and will be going on Friday. I will be representing the board at the delegates assembly on Thursday afternoon. As you know, we voted on and are sponsoring um one of the um. Proposals that are going forward as a re- a, a resolution to be voted on regarding um. State mandates when it comes to curriculum. Um and you know, that, that should be interesting and I think it'll get, I'm hoping it gets good support, but I'll report back on that. And look forward to seeing you guys that are gonna be there, for anybody who is not registered. Uh you still can, even if you're not registered for the conference, you can still come Friday morning at, at ten forty-five. To be part of the picture that, you know, when the commissioner uh gives us our um award for.
Do you have a place where we're gonna meet?
Yeah, it's, it's in the, what they call the north lobby, so on the. When you pull into the hotel parking lot and you're facing, you know, their round driveway. Go to the left and park off to the left of the building, that's the north side and enter through that side entrance. And as soon as you enter, you'll be confronted with the registration table, if that's where you register also. But um if you're not registering for the conference, you just wanna be there for the photo, um then you still come in that way. And when you see that registration table, make a run, look to the right and that's usually where they're taking the photo opportunities. So um. I was asked to be part of the Nutmeg Board Presentation this year, so that'll be fun, that you know, that Tom Mooney. Does that crazy fun, yeah, so if anybody wants to sit in on that, that'll be cool. Uh and then the last thing I just wanted to say is um, because this is the meeting closest to Veterans Day. Um you know, we always choose to have meaningful uh Veterans Day presentations in school rather than taking the day off. Our students seem to appreciate it, as we even heard tonight, um from our student representative Grace, but. Um you know, I just wanna on behalf of the board, thank um all our veterans for their service uh to our country. Thank you. And unless anyone else has any comments? Going once, going twice, okay, let's move on. Um is there any audience response to information presented, there's no one in the audience, anyone online? No, okay. Um so, item seven. Is our consent agenda. Um so action item eight will be a motion, I'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda. All right, Steven and seconded by Emily. Thank you. Um any discussion?
I guess, I, I just have one question on um on substitute teachers. Ahead, behind, on track. Those are those expenditures, or just a qualitative book, doesn't have to be.
Yeah, um I think I could, I can give you a better answer, but I know we're probably behind. Uh because of where we started the year off with a, a couple openings and then also um some attorney staff would. Hit that account, it's not um atypical, the board did put more money into that account this year, as you, as, as you know, but um. It's typically a line item that we're gonna run negative in, uh because of openings, partly because of openings in teacher positions, so. Um ideally, we would be transferring some point during the year to cover that, it's not um something that I'm overly concerned with because. Uh if we, if we ever tried to fully fund that with what we anticipated, while we spending that, we're gonna end up then with um. You know, s- additional savings in uh salaries that is kind of oriented, you know, it's hard to, it's hard to predict and. You know, we've always been able to uh cover that from savings and uh certified salaries, but yeah, it's, it's, it's. Um one of the most volatile lines that we have of lunch.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions? Yeah, okay, um no further discussion, all in favor, I?
I.
All opposed, any, any abstentions, motion carries, seven, nothing, thank you. Um. Action item nine. Or uh I'm sorry, not action item, uh agenda item nine are the board committee and liaison updates. Um so first, Steven, you have a curriculum and student development committee reported.
Okay, the curriculum committee met um this evening, we had one agenda, uh one agenda item. And uh it's the annual process of um the high school. Amending, adapting, changing, dropping, adjusting their program of studies. Um in the details of that, I'll read your packet, but let me just speak to the generics of. That process because it's, it is more than what appears in just. Course names and changes, you know, it's clear. Um that is a deep process that involves the faculty certainly. Uh but it also involves students based on their interest and participation and the topics and the. Um and the career pathways that they would like to see, and so it's, you know, it's a responsive. Process beyond that, there's, you know, clearly a philosophy in place that is guiding this process and. Um you know, one of the more prominent ones that really appears is the whole access of. Or the whole aspect rather of providing more access to challenging courses to students, so. You know, toward that end, there's been, you know, over several years, a process of um. Eliminating level three, which would, you know, historically be the lower level courses from the. Course offerings and have only level one and level two, and that process is pretty much done, except for one course that. Uh will be finished up from this year, but the idea that. You know, students ought to have the opportunity to be challenged. Um and then tracking and, and supporting students through that process uh was clear in the presentation. Tonight. Uh other aspects are about prerequisites, um and again around the idea of. Um making courses accessible, but also being certain that students are properly prepared. That they have the courses that will allow them to then take the more challenging courses and be successful. Another theme that went through the presentation as well was being responsive to students, I mean, it was. It was great to hear that some of the new offerings, and I'll highlight a couple. Um really came from student choice and student interest and the desire to have those courses, so. Uh although on paper it looks like, okay, it's the annual thing, they changed some course names, dropped some, add some, whatever. You know, it reflects a much deeper and responsible process of, you know. Evolving and emerging the. Program of studies for students to be current and responsive and challenging, you know. And I reflect on that when we had the student. Presentations today, because you know, we're talking about phone news, but what the theme that kept through, coming through was. You know, hey folks, our coursework and our work at the school is so challenging, we really don't have. A whole lot of time for. These other things, you know, and upon that person, I mean, so highlighting some of the offerings um. That are new, uh design, pre-construction, career pathway is new. You can go into the packet and you can see the individual courses that fall under that, it's pretty interesting. Insurance, securities and investment career pathway, this is. Really based upon student interest and request and they were given some choices like, you know, it's fascinating. You know, a course around video games and the students chose a definite reference for. This line versus that one. Um. Other courses, sports and performance nutrition. Um investment analysis and production design and modern adaptation, that's in the theater. Um department. A further note was the changing of the civics course to an un-leveled course. Um. To remove its impact on class rank and GPA for particularly third trimester seniors. Uh understanding exactly how that works is a deep dive. Um but it, it, you know, it was presented as being long overdue and um. Helpful to students because that course in itself, where it falls, can affect class rank. Uh by itself, and of course, the students are smart enough to know this, so you know. They would ask to take it online and other places where it wasn't leveled, so they fixed that problem. Um. So it was relatively short, but it was a good meeting and uh there was no public comment and we adjourned at six P M. Any questions?
Questions, Diane? Thank you, Steven, the report, thank you. Facilities committee, Emily.
Yep, so as you heard, we toured Neck River School Construction Site this afternoon, um. I know there's pictures that so shares and posts, so I definitely encourage folks to check it out, it's amazing and we're saying how. A year ago, there was nothing and a year from now, the building will be filled with students. Um so you really get a sense walking around of the layout and as you saw in the presentation, um. It's just gonna be a really, it's gonna be a really cool space, so we, we get a tour, we get to ask questions of the team. One thing that I thought was really nice was the way the cafeteria and gym are kind of in the center of the building, like there's the wings, the wings and then. The cafeteria is sort of open to the second floor, so just having like a real community center feeling to the school. Um. It's gonna be great, it's amazing and there's gonna be a lot happening, um sort of close it up for the next few months and then finishing up all the inside stuff, so. Stay tuned, it was nice to walk around, I get to wear hard hats.
Any questions? Thank you. Finance committee, Galen.
Um we have not.
Okay, thank you. Personnel committee, Marie.
We also have not yet.
Policy committee, Diane.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thanks for doing.
Okay, so the policy committee met on October twenty ninth. Um and we discussed uh all the policies actually that you see in your packet tonight, you should have a copy of the notes from shipment in Goodwin. Um tonight, the action items um are for policies to be rescinded and waive the second read. And then you have a first read for the rest of the policies, so I just wanted to draw your attention to um, well, first I'll tell you that. Uh the policies for tonight for rescission are policies. Six zero eight zero educating students in the core educational program, six zero eight zero point one three, teaching about religion. Six zero eight zero point two zero point one remedial instruction. Six zero eight zero point two two homebound hospital instruction. Six zero eight zero point two nine point three career and vocational education and those are up for again to waive the second read and rescission tonight. Then the policies for first uh review, first reading tonight. Um were the policies we discussed in this meeting and I just wanted to call your attention to the fact that policy thirteen seventy nondiscrimination is in the. Community series with policy four one one eight point one also nondiscrimination and that's in the personnel series. And then five zero two zero point one is nondiscrimination in the student series, so all the changes that were made were to comply with. Um state statute and public acts, and so across the board, all the dis- nondiscrimination policies were updated in the same way. And then if you look also at policy four one one eight point one four, section five oh four of the rehabilitation act of nineteen seventy-three. And title two of the Americans with Disabilities Act of nineteen ninety is in the personnel series and then the corresponding student series. Number five two zero zero, also, they were updated for the similar reasons of trying to um. Uh be i- in line with the state statutes and public acts. And then four zero three zero point five family and medical leave, this is another um. Policy that had to be revised in order to be compliant with a new public act. So a lot of these um policies you have seen recently and they are constantly being updated in Hartford. So you will see them again and again and again with new updates pretty much every year, so those are in your packet, again, those were the first read. Um for the uh rescinding replace. And there was no public comment and the meeting adjourned at four fifty-eight after starting at four thirty-three, end of report.
Any questions?
Um yes, can I? Statement. You know, my review of the policies, I. Um zeroed in on six oh eight uh educating students in core educational program. And you know, part of my original concern looking at it was. Although it clearly is outdated in many ways. You know, making statements about our protocols and how we approach core instruction. Need to be clearly stated, so I, you know, I felt like maybe this is something needs to be revamped on further. Investigation and discussion. Um you know, the areas of importance seem to be covered the way they should be in the six thousand. Line, so I just wanted to. Put that forward, that you know, rescinding six oh eight oh doesn't leave a, a gap that is. Of concern, you know, and it is, you know, it is not at all reflective of what we're currently doing.
Yeah. And that, thank you, Steven, that does happen, it bears repeating occasionally, so I'll take this opportunity. Sometimes it may look bad that we're um rescinding a particular. Uh policy that has a name, the title, that sounds like, oh, why are you rescinding that, you know, it sounds like you wanna have. Um nondiscrimination policies, for example, um and um. The fact is, usually when we're rescinding something, um it's either already covered by federal or state law. So our um law firm is recommending that we don't need to keep a separate policy for it. Um or um we have reincorporated some of the same concepts. In a new, different policy or a combined policy that's consolidated or something like that, so. You need not get worried that we're taking out um important things as we uh work to streamline. Um and make our set of um. Uh policies and bylaws more accessible. So thank you, good point. All right, um so uh next is learn liaison, Mary Ann.
So meeting this Thursday, which I can't go to, um I don't know if anyone said they could. But if not, I did let them know and they do send a synopsis, so I will be able to tell you what, what went on Thursday.
Thank you, and um actually, Mary, I sent an email, I don't know if all of you saw it yet or not. Mary Ann um has a conflict with this coming Thursday and also the following month, which is December. It's the second Tuesday, Thursday, the twelfth, I think it is, December. If anybody can attend either one of those, please let me know, um and you get a free breakfast with it and uh. Thank you very much.
Very nice, yeah.
Where, where do those meetings take place?
So at, at the learn uh building, which is in Old Line.
Old, Old Line, it's right on.
That's at six seventy-three. It's right off the highway.
So, all right, thank you.
It's fine, I'll have a.
Okay, thank you, uh Mary Ann. All right, so we're on to action item ten, I need a motion to waive the second reading and rescind the following policies. Six zero eight zero educating students in the core educational program. Six zero eight zero point one three, teaching about religion. Six zero eight zero point two. six zero eight zero point two zero point one remedial instruction, six zero eight zero point two two, homebound slash hospital instruction and six zero eight zero point two nine point three, career and vocational education. Do I have a motion? Mary Ann, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Emily, thank you. Any further discussion on rescinding those just named? There's no further discussion, I'll call the question, all in favor, aye? Any extensions, motion carries seven, nothing. Thank you. Action item eleven. I need a motion to approve a donation from the Daniel Hand High School Gymnastics Boosters Club to Daniel Hand High School Athletics in the amount of two thousand eighty-three dollars. For a gymnast, for a gymnastics man. Let's Emily, that's motion, can you get a second? Any discussion on this? Just express our gratitude, yeah. Thank you to the booster club. All right, any, no further discussion, all in favor, aye? All opposed, nay? Any extensions, motion carries seven, nothing, thank you. Action item twelve. I need a, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four Board of Education meeting. Do we have a second? Second, thank you. Any requested changes, edits, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye? All opposed, nay? Any extensions? One extension from the Mary Ann. So that will carries six zero one. Thank you very much. Any requested future agenda items? Finally, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.